The weekend, hope all the mothers here had a very wonderful Mother's Day. You certainly will all deserve it for that. First item on the agenda is the update on census participation. This item was requested by Commissioner Neering. Commissioner, do you want to key this up and we'll get staff to respond?
No, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Hope you have a good weekend. So there's not much I can say in terms of kind of keying this up, but I will say a couple of things. One is, I've been thinking about the census and how perhaps, given the function of the city, and I've been hearing parenthetically the different things that the city is doing, which is great. But I'm thinking about the work that commissioners are doing related to the COVID-19 and that response. And I'm thinking there's a better way to use commissioners, and I'm only speaking for myself, so other commissioners, you know, obviously they may disagree with this, but there might be a better way to use and work with us to figure out a way to get these response rates up higher. One of the things, and I don't know if we are doing this, one of the things that I've witnessed in one of our sister cities is that they have taken one of the lowest zip codes within their city, which has been a traditionally low zip code in terms of response rate. Currently, the response rate is very low. And they've tied that into the support around COVID-19 and the response. And so what they're doing is they're asking residents who have responded to the census to, there's a, I'm sure staff knows this better than I, but there's a number that you receive once you respond to the census. And if you supply that number, you receive a $25 public gift card. Again, that's one. I'm sure there are thousands of other strategies that we might employ that perhaps don't cost $25. But the bottom line, what I'm saying is, I was hoping that we could all in one forum hear exactly what we're doing. And I as-
I'll put my speakers in a second.
I, as one commissioner, am wondering if we could figure out a way to include the commissioners a little bit more on our strategies around this. So that's my keynote.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll have staff certainly speak to what we've been doing. It is certainly something that is and has been for a while on our radar, is the census. We've done an extensive amount of communications, outreach, et cetera. And even as recently as, I guess it was Thursday afternoon, we were on a conference call with the Secretary of Commerce, Wilbur Ross, who wanted to speak to us and offer his assistance. But Armando, are you the one that's going to kind of give us the update on where we are and what we've been doing? And I appreciate, by the way, Commissioner, your offer of assistance. And I'm sure we would be willing to take that. But Armando, why don't you educate us on what we have been doing and what we plan to do in the future?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. And Commissioner Neering, I appreciate the, really, we are going to need the engagement, the heavy engagement of the City Commission on this effort. This is going to be, in order for us to really be successful, it has to be a grounds-up type of an effort. And you all will be key to that. So let me share my screen here and show you a couple of things that we are doing and some discussion points for the future. So let's first talk about where we've been so far and what we have been able to do, including some things we have tied in COVID-19. So we have established a complete count committee, which includes, are you able to see my screen, by the way?
Yes.
Which includes a complete count committee, members from different organizations. So Urban League is represented, Housing Authority of West Palm Beach, Pastors Association, and a couple of other organizations. The Rise Initiative is in there as well. So we have met with them several times, and they're helping us with this outreach effort. Some of the places that we participated in in terms of having booths and giving information out has been the green markets. Of course, those were canceled after COVID-19 broke. Climatus by night, same thing. The super climatus by night event for the Super Bowl. We had representatives there from the census and passed out information. Same thing with the World Series trophy celebration that we had on climatus by night. Sandy Land, we already had booths set up and we're distributing information. A Pleasant City Thanksgiving Dinner Event that a lot of you participated in. We had the census there. They had a booth there at the entrance. Urban League, we actually did an event with them of a very large turkey giveaway every year for Thanksgiving. Census was at that event as well. Passing out literature at the peace marches that Kevin Jones does with his staff or his folks. Facebook Live Event, we just did one of those on Friday. That went well. Historic Northwest, there are a couple of festivals they've had there. We've had literature passed out. The Rise Initiative had a large backpack giveaway during, I think it was November, December, somewhere around there. Had a huge turnout for that, so there was information passed out there. And Rise has actually been very good. They've several initiatives that they've actually helped us with the census outreach. There's been a couple of meetings with pastors, including a large contingent of Spanish-language pastors in the South End. Just about every neighborhood association meeting, at least that I've gone to, and Jose and others have spoken about the importance of the census. The mayor mentions it in almost every speech he gives these days. Every time we're talking about COVID-19, I think in every speech I've heard, he ends it with a plea for the census as well. One of the things we're doing to combine with the COVID response and census is, HCD has a reemployment and boot stamp assistance right now on the first floor of City Hall. We're meeting with people one-on-one. So they're engaging with those folks on the census and whether or not they've already filled it out and they haven't helped them with that process. And then we've included the census information at different distributions of events. City Communications has done a whole lot on this effort. And I've got Kathleen Walter here with me as well. So they've dedicated a 2020 website and banners on the city's homepage. See the link there. There's a YouTube video that was produced that's also on our website and on our YouTube site. Census 2020 inserts have been sent to all public utility customers. And we're getting ready to do another one, I believe, in June. So pretty much every utility customer will receive that information. Like trying to build up boards, you may have seen those on Okeechobee. And then there's one on Broadway as well that Lashan mentions the census. And the one on Broadway, excuse me, also has a message in Spanish. There is information that's been posted every week. The mayor's newsletter, which has great circulation, has information on the census. Letter to the editor of Palm Beach Post. Numerous television and radio. I've done radio in Spanish a couple of times regarding the census. And I know Amanda has. And of course, the mayor's done a ton of interviews as well. We have posters up in City Hall when you walk in. Email signatures for all the employees. That includes Census 2020 information that's starting today. And then those of you who are active on Facebook and social media, I'm sure have seen all the stuff on there. The other thing I wanted to touch upon, and I'm going to ask Alex to come in, Alex Hansen, I'll stop sharing the screen and ask him to share his screen. But just real quick, so here's our current response rate, 49.4% in West Palm Beach. And I did want to show you a comparison to some of the cities in county, but also some cities outside of the county. There's been some alarm bells kind of ringing about our response rate. And yes, it is lower than the county average and lower than the state average. However, I think you have to look at Apple's comparison. And if you look at some of the major cities throughout the state, we're right there. You know, unfortunately, with the urban environment, it becomes a little bit difficult. And even more so with the current COVID-19 response issues, to be able to reach some of these hard-to-reach census tracts. And so as social distancing measures are relaxed a little bit, I think we'll be able to do a little better. Because it's really going to take a ground roots, door-to-door effort in some of these neighborhoods. And so you see that Miami, Fort Pierce, Fort Lauderdale, you know, they're all below our numbers. And as is Lakewood Beach and Delray Beach. Some are doing better, but we're right there. I think we can move up fairly quickly. So with that, I'm going to ask Alex to go ahead and share his screen so that we can dive a little bit deeper, dive into the numbers within our city, excuse me. Let me see if I can figure out-
Thank you, Armando.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me share, this is Alex Hansen. Let me share my screen right now. Can everybody see the map?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is a tool that the Census Bureau developed for the 2020 census. Shows the response rates at the state level and also for different jurisdictions. This is for the city of West Palm Beach. As Armando indicated, for West Palm Beach, the self-response rate right now, this is two days ago, which is the latest data, is at 49.4%. A good component of this tool is also that we can look at the information by a census track level, which is what this is showing for the city. So the darker blue areas or census tracks are the ones that are showing the higher response rate. So some of the areas out west, I'm circling here with the darker blue, they are again in the low to mid 70s right now for response rates. Then we have the light blue. And then some of the areas with the lowest response rates are the ones in the darker brown, darker orange area near coastal portions of the city. So some of the efforts that we have been working on for the last few weeks, we have been targeting those efforts towards some of the lower response areas. So again, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. And again, it's mostly some of the areas north of downtown and east of I-95 primarily, even east of the railroad tracks. This is the lowest right now, the lowest response rate census track in West Palm Beach. This is the historic northwest neighborhood, north of Banyan, south of Palm Beach Lakes. It's at 30% right now. Just for reference, though, 10 years ago at the 2010 census, the self-response rate for this area was 33.4%. So while this is low, again, it's the lowest in the city right now, it is on par right now with the self-response that we had about 10 years ago. But again, we're working, we're targeting our efforts on some of these areas that I'm showing right now, which have some of the lowest response rates. Something to keep in mind with these numbers is, what this is showing is, what percentage of the housing units in the city responded to the census questionnaire? We have to keep in mind that there's a decent number of housing units in the city of West Palm Beach where there are no permanent residents, either because they were part of residential developments, large residential developments that were completed within the last few months. So there's no full occupancy of all the units, even though they could be occupied. Also, we have a number of second homes within the city limits. And also, we have a number of units, housing units, that are mostly used for some type of short-term vacation rental. We should not be expecting a response from any of those units. However, the census did send an invitation, a census questionnaire invitation to those units. So just for perspective purposes, we could have every inhabited unit in West Palm Beach respond to the census and still have what could be counted as a 90% or 85% response rate. Because again, we're going to have several thousand housing units in West Palm Beach that are not inhabited, at least permanently.
Alex, before you go on, Commissioner, Madam President has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what you're making is a really good point, Alex. And I was wondering if there's a way for us to compare homesteaded properties to response that we better gauge what our non-response rate is from residents? Is there any kind of indicator that we can use as comparison to kind of eliminate that number of second homes and vacation rentals, et cetera, to really deem who are true residents and what is our true response rate?
Yeah, this is the census track level, which is what I'm showing on the map, is the most specific geographic area that is available to us. The Census Bureau does have address-by-address information as to who has responded and who hasn't. But that is not going to be made available to us. So we have to go by the census track areas. We have some ideas as to why, for example, some tracks may be showing some lower numbers than what would be expected. One specific case is this one that I'm circling here, which has a 40% response rate. This is the area south of Okeechobee Boulevard and east of the FEC railroad tracks. Includes El Cid and as well as some residential areas there. This is also where a lot of the student housing for Palm Beach Atlantic University is located. And the census did send census questionnaires to those addresses. But right now, we think that the response rate for the students of Palm Beach Atlantic University is fairly low. So that would explain, again, some of the lower response rates for some areas. But to your question, we do not have that specific information available to us.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex, you can continue. Thank you.
Yes, so I do not know if, and again, we are working on targeting these specific areas. We can work with the commissioners that represent some of these geographic areas, again, to look at ways to better target the residents here. So again, we're looking mostly at the eastern part of the city still. Even some of the western communities that have higher response rates, we can still do better, even though they're already in the 70% or so. But that is what I want to share with the commissioners today.
And thank you, Alex. And I'm going to go ahead and go back to my presentation real quick. I did have one more screen that I wanted to show.
Let me try to-
Unshare.
And try to unshare.
There should be a red button that says "Stop Sharing" at the top of your screen, Alex.
There we go. All right, so. So let's look at this. So a couple of things. One is, we just got a grant from the National League of Cities. We applied for that really before this COVID-19 crisis hit. And so it was delayed a bit, but we just got the response back that we are going to get, I believe it's $20,000. I haven't gotten that confirmed yet. That is specifically for Census 2020 outreach. So that's great that we'll be able to deploy that in different ways. There's going to be another Facebook Live Event. It's going to be in Spanish. So that's coming. We've got Communications working on that. Where they're also working on a census jingle. And actually, the Census Bureau had a contest, a nationwide contest, looking at creative ways to get the messaging out. Unfortunately, we missed the deadline for the contest, but we are working on a jingle. Communications is working with community events. And they've gotten some good ideas on that. Additional billboards, or excuse me, billboards and signage, additional signage is a potential. Text and Tweet-a-thon, this is something that Communications is working on that will include the city commissioners. So it's a way for you all to communicate with your constituents regarding the census through social media. We're looking at maybe the mayor doing robo calls. Once we get some of the social distancing measures loosened up a little bit, we'll look at onsite registration, whether it's the library or site-specific, like some of the Housing Authority projects. We did buy tablets. We bought, I believe, four tablets that were specifically going to be for the purposes of helping people register for the census. Unfortunately, what that COVID-19 kind of halted that because that's going to take a lot more one-on-one type of outreach. But we'll get back to that soon. And then private partnerships with grocery stores, retail and restaurants, figuring out ways that we can better partner with them so that we're passing out groceries and they get an insert. We've done that with the food distribution, by the way. We've had the food distribution events. We've been putting the census information in the grocery bag or the delivery that the PD has been doing. So we've tried to take advantage as much as we can of the current situation to be able to get the information out there. But love to hear ideas and suggestions, especially we have this extra money coming in that we'll be able to deploy. So I'm curious to listen in on some of the feedback from the city commissioner and the mayor on what else you think we can do.
Thank you, Armando and Alex. And we do have a couple of questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, going back to, I know it was touched on briefly with regard to homesteaded properties, but particularly with some of the residents in my district who have multiple homes. Reading the census instructions, it says you're supposed to pick that residence in which you were in as of April 1st, 2020, if I understand it correctly. And it says, my understanding is you're not required to respond multiple times. Are we penalized for that, though, if I have a resident here in Ibis who has a home elsewhere and has responded to that census request in their home state, but here we show that they didn't respond? I mean, do they cross-reference or cross-check to see that that is the same person in the same household? Or are we getting penalized for them not responding? And it looks like a non-response here in Ibis? Or are other communities where people may have multiple homes?
I'll take a stab at that real quick. And Alex, you can chime in if you have more information. But I don't know if we would get penalized. I guess in the sense that we would show that as a, it would be a lower percentage. But the idea at the end of the day is to have, you know, counting the number of residents that are here. So if we get to a number that's close to what we think is the actual number of people who are full-time residents here or consider themselves full-time residents, then I think that's really what matters, is the total numbers. That's what then drives the resources and funding that we're going to get. So let's say we have 115,000 residents. If we get close to that number or over that number, that's the real, you know, what the percentage is is as important as the actual number. Whether they cross-reference or not, I'm not sure. Alex, do you know if they do that? Alex, you think you might be muted. I'm not sure if Alex is still there. I don't know if they cross-reference or not if you have more than one residence and then take that off of where your second residence would be. My guess is not, but I'll see if I can find out that information from the census. But like I said, the real important thing is the actual number at the end of the day.
Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner?
Just that I guess I need to make sure that I encourage our residents who really split their time six months and six months to consider doing their response here from Florida. But, you know, I guess the reality is you're supposed to be choosing that place which you spend the majority of your time or were in residence as of April 1st. But I guess the western communities are, I guess, are doing fairly well with regard to census reporting anyway.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Armando and Alex. Appreciate the presentation and the thoughtfulness that it looks like you all have put into getting the word out. And thank you, Commissioner Neering. I'm in agreement that any way that, you know, I can help or the commissioners can be helpful, I am on board. I have a couple of questions and an idea as well. It seems like this is largely a communications effort and I guess community outreach with your team. You know, one thing that I was thinking about was the success of the COVID Response Unit model. And thinking about the census, that this is something that we want buy-in from a lot of different departments, groups, parts of our city, parts of the county. And I wasn't sure if, I believe that there's a countywide maybe group that gets together to meet on the census. And I was wondering, do we have a citywide group that has kind of brainstormed ideas on this? And one of the ideas that, I don't know, has gotten discussed or not, would be, I recall seeing when we were doing our annual, I think it's Great Places to Work or Great Cities, that there was a thermometer that kind of shows, where are you in the process, what percentage are we up to? And I'm just thinking about having constant conversations surrounding, okay, where are we with this? And, you know, so that we're all, no matter whether you're a commissioner or staff or a resident or business owner, that we're all talking about it in the community. Where are we?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to have some kind of a measure that we can show, visual. And, you know, this COVID-19 thing has been so overwhelming in terms of the coverage, that people have been living and breathing that for a couple of months. And hopefully, we're getting to a point where we're looking at other things now in the next couple of months. So thankfully, the census was extended. And we'll have, I think, some time to then really refocus some of our effort towards more of the census response. And I agree with the response units. And we do have the Complete Count Committee, which I mentioned earlier, which has represented some Urban League and so forth. But I like the idea of kind of morphing that a little bit into maybe the commission districts or some other geographic separation that then we can really have concentrated efforts in certain parts of the city with all the different parties that are involved, all the different stakeholders. Yeah, and the county does have also complete, most cities have Complete Count Committees and there's a countywide one as well, which mostly focuses on unincorporated, but also other areas as well. So I like that idea. And we can throw that around of how we can reconstitute something like the Response Unit for Census.
Armando, what kind of outreach have we had with the business community to help us get the word out?
Yeah, we haven't done, honestly, we haven't done a lot with the business community. And that's why I put that up there. I think that's an area that we can really be more robust in and take advantage of, particularly with the grocery stores and restaurants and some of these other businesses that are reopening now. I think it's a good opportunity there to engage with them and have them be part of this effort.
Have you made a pitch to, have you been before the chamber board?
Not on this particular issue, no.
All right, maybe we could set that up. I'll reach out to Dennis and see if we can, particularly those employers that have employees in West Palm Beach. But we could probably make a very good case in front of their board at some point. And I'll talk to Dennis Brady about that.
Great.
Commissioner Neering, you had a follow-up?
I did. Thank you and thanks for the presentation. And I appreciate, you know, kind of hearing all of the strategies. What seems to be, and I'll just say this, what seems to be missing is how are we engaging those zip codes with traditionally low response rates and kind of in-the-moment low response rates? And so I think obviously, this is a, it's got to be a holistic approach. But I also believe that we can't, it's got to be probably beyond a communication message to reach these, some of these zip codes where we have traditionally seen low response rates to the census. And again, in the moment, we all know COVID-19 is here. So I'm not going to preach on that or talk about that. We can allow that to be an obstacle or we can figure it out. And so I don't pretend to have the answers. But, you know, I'm not saying this should be a strategy, but I use the strategy that I alluded to a little bit earlier. And that was the city of Lakewood Beach, where they've taken 33460. And I graduated from Lakewood High, so I have a lot of family members in that area, taking that zip code, 33460, and really have employed different strategies based on the zip code. Because what we're realizing is, there are just going to be some communities where you're able to do this kind of light touch. And it's going to happen. And we're seeing this. And I wish I had the information in front of me, but we're seeing a lot within our gated communities. We're seeing that's a higher response rate or on par. And we can match this up with other issues, whether it be voting, whether, I mean, you name it. We kind of see the same zip codes that suffer from some of these issues. So again, don't know the answer to it, team, mayor. But I'm hoping that through and with the commissioner's support, we can figure out ways that, you know, all of our communities are able to respond to this. And I just don't think you can prescribe the same medication across the board and expect it to change. That's kind of what I'm saying. And I know you know this. We all know this. And again, I don't know the answers, but cities like partner cities, sister cities, like Lakewood Beach and others, have employed some different strategies that I think we could possibly take a look at. could possibly take a look at, so.
Well, we are certainly openly hearing any best practices. I don't know, Commissioner Nearing, do you know who the point person is in Lake Worth Beach? Maybe Armando and Alex can have a conversation with him or her and compare notes?
Yeah, I can totally, I can follow up offline and put you on-
Could you, could you follow up, maybe get that information to Armando? And, you know, it, it's maybe worth it. Now, who is active on the Palm Beach County League of Cities?
I am, Mayor.
Are, are they saying anything? Are they doing any presentations? Any best practices being shared at that level?
You know, similar to what Armando said, is not since COVID. So this is definitely a priority for me to bring up. And one of the things I was going to mention as well to League of Cities is possibly some kind of friendly competition amongst some of the cities in the county as well. And, and is there something we could do to try to challenge each other and to, you know, I think, Armando, you were talking about some, that nationwide contest, and so could we do something countywide that would entice people to, to want their city to win?
I mean, that's a great idea. They do it for literacy. I mean, every year there's a literacy competition, who's read to the most schools, et cetera. Armando, what is the deadline now? I know it's been extended out, right? I mean, what is the deadline for census compliance?
Yeah, I think we're now in October is the new deadline.
All right, so there may be time to start some of that up. Commissioner Lambert, if you don't mind, maybe talking to some of the powers that be and seeing if they're interested. Obviously, it benefits all municipalities. I mean, the higher the response rate is, everyone benefits from that.
And to Commissioner Nearing's point, and I, I totally agree, we're going to need, there's different strategies for different neighborhoods. And so one of the reasons that we really were pretty picky about who was on the Complete Count Committee, as opposed to just a broad array of folks, was to really target the neighborhoods. And RISE has done, like I said, RISE has done a good job. We did partner with Urban League, and we've tried to hit those neighborhoods. And I think once, once we can get back out and do more of that, literally door-knocking in some cases, and, and having those iPads out there, the folks can fill it out right in front of us, having events at the Housing Authority, projects partnering with them, I help drive the numbers. But yeah, we need different strategies for, for different neighborhoods, and we need to maybe provide some incentives. And we talked about with this money that we got from League of Cities, and maybe have some small gift cards, maybe partner with some restaurants so that they're getting food at the restaurant with a gift card, and that helps the restaurant as well as the, as the census numbers.
Also, if I can jump in in response to Commissioner Nearing's question, we, we have identified the two zip codes 33407 and 33401 as the two zip codes with the lowest response rate. So I've been in contact with our communication team, and we're devising different strategies to target those two zip codes specifically.
Okay. Madam President, you, you had another question?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify on the incentives portion. If, if we're able to give incentives, I think there's an opportunity, that's kind of a variation on the theme that Commissioner Nearing had mentioned, in that in our COVID Response Unit, we have talked about an economic development strategy of doing a dining dollars program, which provides dining dollars to local West Palm Beach restaurants. So perhaps there's the opportunity that if we have residents that can provide their code that says they've completed the census, they could receive West Palm Beach dining dollars. As you look at the map, the map shows that the lower response rates are some of the more socio-economically challenged areas of our city. And so what it would do is in turn provide a food resource that stimulates the local economy to our restaurants, all while completing our census. So, you know, as a, as a, an intro program or a test program from a COVID Response Unit, I'm, I'm happy to take that on, if, if we would be comfortable moving forward for sort of a, a test area and trying to identify how we could implement that, those programs. There, I think we have a number of strategies that can work in tandem, you know? Doing that program doesn't prevent us from working on a, a county competition, you know, or anything else, but I think it's a really good start to try to do just a, a test program, and it, it checks a lot of boxes down the line. So happy to implement that strategy.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, and maybe you can talk to Armando offline and put, put the, Armando and Alex and put the details in place. Commissioner Lambert, you had a follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor. I had wanted to talk about the countywide competition, but then I also just wanted to make sure that while we're involving different strategies, that we're also talking about different messaging as well, and message, you know, testing as to what motivates someone to want to complete something in different areas, you know, that might be different as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. That's basically what I was going to say, was just what Commissioner Lambert was saying. I was wondering if we're getting any feedback as to what is the primary reason people are not filling it out? Is it an awareness issue? Or is it sort of like a fear of not wanting to have to put their information in? Or if there is, you know, just to Commissioner Lambert's point about the messaging that might be, be communicated to different people that are having different issues? But I don't know if we have that kind of data.
No, we don't have that kind of data, but yeah, I suspect that part of it, it's kind of a, runs the gamut from folks in the, in the non-English speaking community, communications gap, and fear of, of reporting their information that's going to be used for something else. And I think just the minority communities in general, we've seen throughout, throughout the years, just a distrust of having to put, give something to the government, give information to the government, in this case, very personal information. And so we have to figure out a way to overcome that distrust.
But also another issue that is now prevalent for this 2020 census is, this is the first time that the census is, is asking for people to respond primarily online.
Right.
So we have the digital divide in some of our communities, where people have either no, no online access, or limited access, or they may not be proficient. So what we have seen in actually some of the lower response areas is people have not responded online, but they're starting to respond with the actual mail-in questionnaire, which just became available in the last few weeks. The Census Bureau has started mailing the questionnaire, the paper questionnaire, to those households that have not responded. And so we have seen that in some of the low response areas, roughly half of the households who have responded did it through mail, as opposed to online. Some of the Western communities that may be more affluent, it was almost exclusively online. So again, there's some of that too. So we're now encouraging the people who have started to receive the mail questionnaire to, to do it that way, because they may not be so comfortable doing it online.
That's a very good point. Commissioner Fox, you, you had a follow-up?
Well, I was just going to say, to that point, is there any possibility that we can assist in having, making it easier for people to apply online, like having a location where we could assist them the same way that we're having them come in to help with food stamps and things like that? I don't, I don't know if that's an option in the city that we could offer, it's the team to, you know, assist with internet-
I know there's been some linkage between those coming in to get assistance and, and the census response. I don't know, Armando?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
What does that look like?
No, that's correct, but the also, the other thing was, we did buy iPads to do that kind of outreach and have the ability. And the library was going to be one of the primary places that we were going to do that, and unfortunately, we had to close the library. We're looking at reopening it, hopefully soon, and we'll be able then reestablish that, that strategy. But also the onsite, we can partner with, like I said, the Housing Authority, they've got plenty of locations that we can do days there and have food or whatever, other incentives to get people, to drive people there, and then be able to do it right there onsite.
You know, Armando, one thing I'm also thinking is, we ramp up the testing, COVID-19 testing in some of those underserved areas. Maybe we could have a, a member of the census team, one or two members tag along with the iPads.
Great.
And see, now, we will probably have people who are not from West Palm Beach, but there may be a number of West Palm Beach residents, and maybe we could piggyback on, on the testing efforts.
Yep.
To, to, to get some, hopefully get some increased response.
Yeah, that's a great-
Something to think about. Madam President, you had a follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I had some similar thoughts to that. As I know, we have various parks and recreation buses that aren't being used right now, that perhaps there's a way to create mobile units that, that cover more than just census, but provide COVID information as far as COVID recovery, access to programs, that kind of thing, as it comes down the line. And again, I don't know the practicalities of this, and, and that would have to be looked at. But as well, we have a number of city-owned vehicles, be it a sanitation truck, et cetera, out on the roads every day, maybe just, and we also have a sign shop, you know, printing of a simple magnet that goes on the side that, that advertises, you know, census-type activities, because we have those vehicles going around. I put it out there as food for thought, I realize every idea comes with a, an effect and a cost associated with that, but just to kind of be creative about it, we, we may have some opportunities. I do think as we look to what some of those strategies are, we've had some really great ideas. I think we've seen a lot of examples of how motivating someone to do something requires a very tangible reward. And so looking at what you could possibly get, be it a, a gift card to somewhere, or, you know, whatever premium, marketing premium that is, I think that, that tends to be the best thing, to whatever legal extent that we can do that. So, thank you.
We've also talked internally about doing something similar to the, the voting efforts with souls to the polls, and I don't know what we would name it, but something to that effect that would, that would really drive people towards a census, filling that out. But we've talked about some strategies on doing that and engaging the faith-based community more.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Nearing, for providing us an opportunity to discuss about this. A number of ideas have come out, and it does not surprise me with the level of creativity exhibited by the various commissioners. So hopefully, Armando, you and your team have been taking notes, and I would encourage commissioners, as you have other thoughts that come to you, certainly reach out to Armando, to Alex, and, you know, no idea is a bad idea, and we're all looking to, to boost the city's performance. But hopefully, there'll be follow-up on a number of very good suggestions. I don't see anything else on this item, so we will move to item two. Let's hear his objection, okay. Businesses reopening strategies, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. When we put this item on the agenda, there wasn't nearly as much information as there is now regarding reopening of businesses. Since we put this on the agenda, the governor's order went into effect today, that restaurants could open 25%, along with numerous other businesses. And I know, Mayor, you've put out some guidance on that as well, putting a, a small moratorium on nail salons, salons and barber shops, to make sure that we can safely open. So what we did was put together a plan, and a huge thank you to the CRA, the DDA, Chris Ruge, and, and our COVID recovery, COVID response team for, for coming up with some regulations. So the thought process behind this was that as businesses start to reopen, that we can put some regulatory guidelines about how they can safely reopen with social distancing. And it has come into two different flavors. One is looking at large public areas and right-of-ways, city-owned properties throughout several different areas of the city. And the second was looking at private areas, privately owned areas. So if I'm a restaurateur and I know my neighbor next door has an empty lot that I could use, how do we work together throughout city, various city departments to make sure that we have special use permitting regulations around implementing those? So we broke into some various areas of the city. The CRA has been working on the north end of the city, as well as the historic northwest. The DDA has worked in the downtown, and Chris Ruge and the Economic Development Team, as well as Development Services with Rick Green, has worked on the south end, to try to identify some strategies of how we can move into the public area. So as restaurants are open at 25% capacity, having only 25% capacity may not be economically feasible for them. So how do we get them more physical area to move into while still maintaining social distancing practices, very safe hygiene practices, et cetera? And then how do we clearly communicate that? So we've come up with a, a system of using right-of-way areas as well as privately owned space, and having some very clear positive messaging and approaches. And, and the third component of this is security and policing, and how do we enforce this? By making sure that we have very clear, consistent communication, that our security ambassadors can hand out palm cards of, you know, welcome, welcome back out and about in West Palm Beach, and here are the socially-distanced practices that we're now employing, and just making sure that we can have everyone come back out and safely do business as we go along. Now, the, the plans that you're, you're going to see today are of course going to be an ever-evolving plan. New regulations are coming out, both from the governor's office, from the city of West Palm Beach, and what is paramount of this is safety, safety, safety. So what we're trying to do is, is implement an idea that as we go along, may be adjusted to make sure that we're accommodating the needs of restaurant businesses, retail businesses, other types of businesses. And it's just a prototype model that we can try to get some sort of order around making sure that West Palm Beach businesses open safely. So, Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to turn it over to Economic Development and the DDA and CRA to do a presentation of some ideas.
All right, very good. Who's leading with the presentation? Is that you, Chris, or Raphael?
Yes, Mayor. Okay. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so, good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. As Commissioner Shof has mentioned, we have been thinking pretty long and hard about how we can support our restaurant and retail businesses during this difficult time. So today, we're just going to go over, again, we'll get into detail on some of those guidelines, and also talk about how we might be able to permit this moving forward, as well as the messaging that's going to be needed, the enforcement that I think is going to be very much a partnership between, between everybody, namely the businesses and the PD and, and folks participating in the program. And then, lastly, we are thinking that, you know, there will need to be some exit strategies that, that need to be considered as well, both, you know, depending on how things turn out, we're already hearing about some other municipalities that are having successes and challenges, and how we can address those in the event that the regulations become less restrictive in how we evolve, but at the same time, if things do end up getting a little bit more sour, how we also address that as well. So, real quickly, most of you already know this, the overview of where we're currently are, as the governor stated last week, we are opening, restaurants are opening at a 25% capacity, and that we also have, will continue to maintain limiting large gatherings, and the social distancing will be required, and then also that 72-hour moratorium on barber shops and salons. So the guidelines of what we're proposing today, obviously, first and foremost, following CDC regulations and what is coming out of the Florida Department of Health, and maintaining that everybody is safe, and that we continue to do our best to prevent the spread of the virus using what the recommendations are coming out of those agencies. And then knowing that businesses have to operate at a limited capacity, how we can use those public spaces outside of their four walls so that they can increase customer service? And ultimately, the, the goal of all of this is basically to allow businesses to serve more customers by still abiding by the direction given by the state of Florida, the county and the mayor. So with that, I will say, our, our partners have done the lion's share of this, namely the DDA, so we're going to start with downtown, and I'm going to turn it over to Raphael now, who will get into the details. I'll still control the slides, but they've done a lion's share of the work on this, and I think you all will be really pleased with what they've come up with. Raphael?
Is he on mute?
Am I muted now?
Yeah, there we go, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's great to see everyone. Raphael Clemente, Downtown Development Authority. And Chris, I'll just ask for a slide change when I'm ready. First of all, I want to say that we've been really proud to work with your team, Mayor James, on creating this plan and to share it for use citywide. We created it in a way that can be applied anywhere. You just need the basic guidelines and either public space or a cooperative private property owner. So the gist of the idea, as Chris described it, is just to recreate lost capacity for restaurants that are only able to operate at 25% inside their, their venues. We have taken every possible step, we're still putting the, the details together, but to adhere to safe distancing and cleaning and sanitizing requirements. In fact, later today- In fact, later today, um, a member of my team and I are going to meet with a woman who has a cleaning company and she happens to be one of the few people around with a certification in sanitizing uh, spaces. Um, she owns a, she owns a company and I think cleans medical facilities. And I am looking to bring her in as an advisor, as a consultant. So we are sure that we're doing what we're doing in the maintenance of these spaces, we're, that we're doing it right. Uh, of course, we'll, we'll share everything that we learned from her. Um, and then this, this program is adaptable, as I said, to any outdoor space. And what I suggest we will be able to do with this is learn as we go and then um, scale this up or scale it down as necessary. Next slide, please. So the, the um, the general parameters of this, uh, as you see in the graphic, is that any space that you are, will be deploying the uh, dining on-the-spot program, if you set it up on a grid, uh, a roughly a 20 by 20 grid yields enough space for four dining spaces that still adhere to the six-foot separation guidelines. This is dramatically less than what you could typically see in 400 square feet uh, of dining space, but this is the reality that we're working with. Uh, so these two are, these two uh, graphics show this, the size of the spaces placed on that grid and then what types of seating configurations could be placed in those spaces. And again, this is all gonna come down to managing and maintaining uh, how this uh, program is, is deployed. Next slide, please. We've looked initially at several locations uh, to roll out this program. We're still deciding what phase one will look like, but in general, the area is shown in red or where we think we could deploy the program. I do not think that the, that every one of those spaces will be part of the first deployment simply because we want to be sure we get this right before we go too big. Uh, we like to learn as we go and then phase in other areas. The blue, the areas denoted in blue are spaces that are uh, civic use spaces. For example, the lawn of the bend, the plaza of the Broadstone Con- condominium, et cetera. These are spaces that are privately owned but that are dedicated for public use, um, at least most of the time. These could be passive dining areas where if people would like uh, to grab a to-go meal, which I think will become a very important component of restaurant revenue, that they could go and sit down in a nice, comfortable spot and still have the same experience, but um, not, not with the curbside, not, I'm sorry, not with the table service uh, experience that they would have on the doorstep of a business. Uh, and I can go through these. If anyone has any questions, we can go back to some of these spaces, but I'll get through the presentation first. Uh, next slide, please. We have worked uh, hand in hand, as I said, with your team and, and most notably fire and police. I want to thank, I want to give them a shout out to, to um, Chiefs Gribble and Laduke for bringing out the fire truck and putting it on the street and allowing us to measure it so we could maximize the space that we can allocate to dining while still making sure that they can get to somebody who needs their help or get to a fire without having any impediments to their passage. Community events, Mary and her team have been great in helping us and um, we spoke this weekend and uh, at least initially, what, what we're hopeful for is that with her expertise and with her team's expertise, they can help us develop the plan to manage this program. And then we're gonna turn it over to a, a team of people who will run it from then on. Obviously, the planning department, Rick and his team, and then of course, the businesses. And daily, I'm speaking with business owners about how this will work for them. Uh, so it wouldn't make sense to do it if it doesn't, but utilizing the public space um, as, as close as we can to their businesses will effectively allow them to have what's commonly called an extension of premises. Next slide, please. So the general idea, and we're just gonna use the 200 block because it's a, it's a great place to give an example of how adaptive the plan is. Um, this is the condition of the block as it is now, or, you know, under, under typical circumstances. Next slide. This is, the, the blue areas are where we can or, or propose to have seating. The yellow area will serve as the pedestrian walkway, allowing the allocation of the spaces immediately in front of the restaurants to be used for seating. When that, when a fire truck does need to pass that 15-foot clear space dedicated, the 99.99% of the time, there's not a fire truck in it. That is a clear zone that a fire truck can pass through or stop in and still allow uh, the emergency response team to do their jobs. You'll note here in this diagram of the 200 block, that the eastern portion of the block from Narcissus to roughly the mid-block crossing is open to traffic. My suggestion is that we leave it open in this way. We make it one-way westbound so cars can enter from Narcissus. They can pick up food or retail. We, we, you know, we have a mixed, uh, a mixed tendency on this block. We have retail and restaurant. This would allow vehicles to pick up food or to pick up a retail uh, purchase from Pioneer Linens and then exit to the north through Pioneer Linens Lot. This still needs to be worked out with Penny Murphy and her family, obviously. But this is a flexible plan that would allow the best of both worlds. Maximum capacity for seating, still allowing traffic, allowing traffic flow for curbside pickup was a, which is a key element to business revenues and key, and maintaining access to the uh, Pioneer Linens Lot. Next slide, please. Um, so you see where the seating would be. And again, these are all, this is all a learn-as-we-go. Um, what we get is a significant increase of what, what would otherwise be called cafe seating, but it's also spaced out on the grid, that six-by-six grid that I, that I described. Next slide, please. Um, just a, a drawing. Cheryl Morante created all of these graphics for us. I think she's on this call if we have any specific questions. But this is what it looks like, um, if you were to lay it out. Um, most of the locations, I think, will best be served by tables with umbrellas and of course, these will be weighted. Um, in some areas, tents would be more appropriate just because of the nature of the space and the need to create shade. Uh, in the case where we have table service that is um, served by restaurants, effectively um, expanded cafe seating areas, our request to them, I think it would be a prudent request, is that if you are seating customers in your business at 25% of interior capacity or on the street in the areas immediately in front of your business, that they be required to have reservations. My concern is that we don't want to have lines queuing up and crowds gathering, especially as we learn. Um, so a reservation system with a time specific for your seating would certainly help to manage that. Uh, in public areas where people would be welcome to dine on their own, um, our plan is to staff those, not just with um, sort of a hall monitor, if you will, or an ambassador to make sure people aren't rearranging tables and chairs, but to also make sure that things are being cleaned appropriately every time a table turns. As Chris noted at the beginning of this presentation, signage and communication of our plan are critical to not just the functionality of the program, but also to the public perception of it. We want to be sure that we are safe, that we are adhering to all guidelines, that we're managing the program well and that the public and the restaurants participating know that. Next slide, please.
No, no, uh, uh, Raphael, before you move off of this slide, Commissioner Lambert has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Raphael. Just a quick question. Is it the restaurant owner's responsibility to purchase and maintain these cafe seating tables and areas?
Good. I'm happy you asked that question, Commissioner, and I apologize. I didn't make clear. Um, the big, the, the plan is that to the greatest extent possible, um, for the areas in the downtown, that the DDA will be renting this equipment. Um, we are pretty far along in conversations with uh, rental companies. I think we're at a point where we could um, make a decision to move ahead later this week or certainly by the weekend, provide a, a green light on this program. Um, we, we, I, I, I don't think that, you know, with the restaurants being hit so hard by this, that if we can provide this benefit to them as an incentive, not just the additional public space, but the temporary equipment until they can resume normal operation. You know, I think about, and not, not to go too far into this, but I think about how hard we have all worked over the past decade to build up our business districts and we risk losing so much uh, right now. Um, just like we would deploy an incentive program to attract new businesses or retain existing businesses like facade grants or build-out grants, I view the use of public funds and the um, re, you know, the reallocation of the use of public space in the exact same way is this is a, this is a retention program uh, through the hardest time we've ever seen, any, any of us have ever seen. Um, so yes, the DDA, I intend uh, to bring this to my board uh, with a uh, a contract, if you will, for um, renting this equipment. I have in my budget at least two months of funds to rent and maintain by cleaning and, and making sure all this stuff is uh, taken care of well. I have about two months of funding for that and we did that by reallocating significant uh, uh, funds within our budget, just shifting them over because of the priority that we're facing right now.
Yeah, Commissioner, if I could also add, um, just to be clear, there are no um, fiscal requests included in this presentation. These are all just, this is just sort of a plan of action. Um, anything uh, that would have a cost would probably, that, that we would need commission approval that isn't already budgeted would come back obviously to the mayor, um, and then potentially the commission at a later date.
Uh, quick question, uh, and, and I'll let you get on with your presentation. This looks great on uh, Clumatta Street where we have the wide streets that we just invested in. Uh, what about other parts of our city? And maybe that's coming up later in your presentation. Do you have a strategy for those restaurants? And I'm thinking about South Dixie, uh, uh, Northwood. Uh, I assume you have some strategies in place for those areas?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, yes, later on in the presentation, in fact, right after Raphael finishes up, Allison Justice is on, on hand, ready to um, talk about the, the plan for the Northwood Village area. And then I've been working with Rick Green and his team about potential solutions down off of South Dixie. Again, these are just examples, but the idea is that these principles can be applied citywide.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Raphael.
Yes, sir. Um, next slide, please, Chris. Um, so, so the management plan would include staffing of dining areas for cleaning and sanitizing, whether that is done by restaurant staff or by hired help in areas that are uh, just common seating. Um, it is, is the first, sort of the first step in this. Face covering is required for all staff, of course, six-foot separation. And as I, as I noted earlier, reservations for participating restaurants, just to be sure that we don't uh, um, have people congregating. And then a prohibition on smoking as these will be dining areas. And just like any other dining area, we will treat it the same way. Next slide, please. You go ahead to the next slide? Thank you. Um, our needs, um, we have been working hand in hand, as I've said, with uh, your team, Mayor James, uh, planning, fire, police, et cetera. As we uh, put this program into place, it is going to take for at least a period of time, uh, what I'll call an all-hands-on-deck approach, just to make sure we've got it right. We're not, you know, tripping ourselves up with any, uh, with, with violating codes and laws. We want to make sure that we have everything in uh, in the appropriate place and not, and not just physically, but from a policy perspective. Um, permitting, I know that Rick is, is probably listening in and whatever permits are necessary, insurance, et cetera. Um, we'll be sure that that is done and ready to go. I think our biggest challenge right now is, um, and, and you, you brought it up, in areas where we have the space and the capacity on the street, that's great, but in areas where we don't, maybe a lane, a, a lane of, of a road is necessary. So planning out the maintenance of traffic and how uh, that will be not just deployed, but managed, signed, et cetera. Again, we're gonna learn as we go. And then enforcement and staffing support. I would say on the management uh, and, and the um, the needs uh, listed here, we're probably at 75 or 80% ready. I do feel like by the end of this week, at least for a phase one deployment, we will be ready. Next slide, please.
So I think, um, I think we're gonna now get into uh, the Northwood Village area. Allison, are you, you're still with us?
Be, be, before we go there, uh, Commissioner Neering had a question. Commissioner?
Oh, yes, okay. I froze or something. Uh, thank you. Um, okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, sir.
Okay. Thank you uh, for that and I'm excited about that. And I don't know if we've looked to um, Orlando as they have implemented this uh, several weeks ago and probably some lessons learned there that we may want to consider. My question is, um, I realize that this is fluid and in terms of scalability, we're working through all of that. Have we thought about um, the 300 block? And the reason why I'm asking that question is I can imagine, because I've heard it already, that several of the quote-unquote bars who offer food will be trying to reclassify uh, their liquor license to restaurants. Um, again, we, you know, it is what it is, but my, my question is, are we thinking about the 300 block and are we taking that into consideration? Because the statement that you made, Raphael, which I think is so important, is um, really across the board, how much work has, has been done to support um, this district in particular, but all districts. But I'm talking about Clumatta's here now. And I think from a city standpoint, um, again, whatever we can do to support um, folks as they figure out how to um, you know, operate in this new world, so to speak, we, we should be, you know, willing to do that to a certain extent. So, I'm gonna put a period there and just, Raphael, I'm curious, uh, Mayor, if I could, uh, what you've heard about that and just any thoughts on that as it relates to the 300 block?
Um, well, uh, I'll, I'll start off by saying the lessons learned from Orlando and Tampa and other areas. We have the um, we have the benefit of having restaurateurs that are also in those markets.
Right.
So yes, sir, I have been uh, regularly communicating with them to uh, benefit from their lessons learned in those places.
Right.
Uh, and they've been, they've been tremendous, uh, tremendously helpful in us tailoring this plan to be successful. In terms of bars, um, I'll, I'll be blunt. There, there are gonna be bad actors in this. And uh, if I have one concern about um, detrimental effects from this program is that people are going to uh, abuse the, the uh, the right to expand into the street and they are not gonna control uh, how they're managing their business and it's gonna hurt everybody. So, um, yes, I am thoughtful and aware of that. I have heard from some business owners that are trying to figure out how to make it work and I, and I'm sensitive to that, 100% sensitive to that. But at the same time, I realize that the executive order says it's restaurants and not bars. Um, not trying to hurt anyone's business at all, but also not trying to get us in trouble and, and wind up, you know, where we have to reel this back in, that would be a terrible, that would be a terrible outcome.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we're gonna have to have heightened scrutiny uh, because it's, it's not just a matter of nuisance, noise, uh, problems or anything like that. This is really public safety. So, part of the thinking has gotta be uh, who, what, what, what resources we devote to enforcement of the various guidelines that are being set out here. Uh, and I say that to uh, uh, Ms. Johnson uh, and, and staff 'cause I'm sure there will be a price tag attached to that if we do this properly. And I'm encouraging that we do it properly from an enforcement standpoint. Uh, and it will probably be more enforcement in these areas uh, than we typically have uh, because this is now public safety. And yes, this is new, uh, but because it's new, there may be people who are pushing at the edges. Uh, so if you have tables set up, now you may have a few people who want to, to, to spend time talking to the diners. And now rather than four at a table or four in that area, you've got eight or you've got 10. So we've gotta figure out a way to politely, uh, but convincingly uh, discourage that, the, the breaches or the violations of social distancing guidelines. So that's gotta be, that, that's gotta be factored into this, is heightened enforcement of the social distancing issues. Um, uh, Commissioner Beduzzi, you have a question before we move on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I heard the term used, common seating. And what my question is, will any of the individual restaurants have exclusive use over a group of tables or individual tables or will everything be considered common? How will, how will you regulate who, which restaurants get to use which tables?
Commissioner Beduzzi, I, I think that, so, so, so in, in short, yes. Some, in some areas where we, where we place seating immediately in front of a business, just as if it was their cafe seating. So if you were sitting down at Roxy's and they have their cafe seating on the sidewalk or at, or at Duffy's, yes, you will, they would be able to serve into the, to those seats in the public space, and they would also be maintaining, cleaning, et cetera, those seats in front of their business. As we lay the program out and actually put it in the space, we'll designate what makes sense. And again, I will, I'll, I'll suggest that we're gonna learn as we go, hand in hand with, with the merchants. I have to say, every business owner I've spoken with, I've never, I've never had a time in the fourteen years I've been at the DDA where there has been more collaboration and cooperation between our businesses than I've seen now. They, I think the overwhelming attitude is that they're all in this together. So I think that there is gonna be a harmonious cooperation in terms of how they manage themselves and the space that they're gonna be given for this program.
On the enforcement point again, I, I think that the business owners will have to recognize that if they kind of turn a blind's eye, if you will, to the social distancing breaches, that it could adversely affect their ability to continue to have the luxury of having this eating space outside. So somehow we've got to communicate that message that you, business owner, will have to enforce this because if you don't, then you're gonna lose your right to have these dining facilities. So that, that will at least help us. Because if they want to hold on to this, then they're gonna have to do some self-policing. Armando, you wanted to speak to the enforcement issue as well?
Well, Mayor, if, Mayor, if I could, I, I get into enforcement and a lot of other things that I think are pertinent to the conversation and the rest of the presentation.
Right.
I don't know if you wanna hear the rest of that, but happy to.
Okay, you're getting that. Okay, let Armando make his pitch and then, then I'll shut up and you, you guys can finish.
Yeah, real quick, I just want to chime in that staff is working with the city attorney's office on a potential executive order to kind of lay some of this stuff out, especially outside of the downtown where it's not gonna be our, typically not gonna be our chairs and tables that were being deployed. And so within that executive order, there may be opportunities to spell what penalties would be in any enforcement act.
Okay. All right, very good. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Allison, are you?
Oh, you know what? No, I'm sorry. I do have, Madam President wanted to chime in on that as well. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I, I can cover that. I know Chris has it later in his presentation. So when he gets to enforcement, I'll, I'll submit a new comment to make my comments then. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Chris, go ahead. Allison, whoever.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Madam President. And Chris, for putting this together in, in conjunction with working the downtown, this is just to show some examples of how do we expand this throughout the city. And particularly, we have a couple of CRA districts outside of downtown that we wanted to take a look at. And as we were talking to the business owners in Northwood Village, we started doing some analysis of where is their public space? You know, it could be public space within the right of way. The CRA owns land within Northwood Village, and then there are some vacant private parcels that could be available for use as well. So this just shows kind of the analysis we did in Northwood Village. Slide. We also did the same for the historic Northwest. As you can see, there, we have a couple of restaurants on Tamrin, Tenpence Soul and Hamburger Haven. They do have some adjacent space. We do have parking spaces that are in front of, of their locations as well that could be utilized as, as public space. Queen Ashiba, the CRA owns a lot across the street from Queen Ashiba, and she has some, some outdoor space herself. It may be someone like Queen Ashiba that she needs some assistance with getting some, some shade, maybe a tent, something that, that would make people more comfortable outside. And then, of course, Trendy Gourmet, she's both in the historic Northwest and in Pleasant City. And there's some space that we utilize right outside of, of a restaurant as well. So, the next slide. And this just shows, this just shows kind of what you can do in these, in these areas. It's a little different than downtown in Northwood and in, in the Northwest. And as we've spoken to the businesses, they're really less excited, I guess, about closing the road completely. We can close Northwood Road. They want to look at that maybe in a couple of weeks. We cannot, we do not have the ability to close Twenty Fourth and Twenty Fifth Street because those are DOT roads. They were really more interested in doing the parklet, in a sense, the parklet and the parking spaces. These aren't metered spaces, these are free spaces. And it's balanced really between making sure that there's still pickup locations, there's still retail, parking for retail, and, and balancing that out through down, down Northwood Road. And so we've set up an example here. As Raphael mentioned, part of the CRA's incentive would be the covering, so tents, hand sanitizers, fencing, things like that. The businesses said they have plenty of tables, they don't mind dragging them out and pulling them back in in the, in the evening. So we're working again directly with them. This just goes, you know, some ideas. And as Raphael mentioned, by Friday, if, if we can get some regulations in place, we will be, we will be able to roll some of these out as well.
Okay.
And then just continuing with the final part of the south end of the city, I, I was really thought this was the great example of, of kind of illustrating how places along South Dixie Highway could utilize it. As you can see here, this is just south of the Norton on South Dixie Highway. This is Flamingo Park here in the middle. And it's, it's a beautiful little spot that really isn't utilized a whole lot normally. There are some folks that I think, you know, spend some time in the park after picking, picking up their pups here at VIP. But with Hive Home Gardening Gift and Table Twenty-Six, Serenity Garden, Grotto and Civil Society Brewing Company, you can kind of see how, along with the streets that are city streets here, that you can utilize several different spaces, both public and private, where you can apply these principles up and down South Dixie. Unfortunately, South Dixie Highway, we will stay, have to stay away from. I don't see us really being able to implement anything quickly because of the state road regulations. I think the state will have serious concerns in doing anything there. So we're just primarily focusing on city streets and again, public and private spaces where businesses can hopefully take these principles and apply them to give them additional capacity to serve customers. So going into permitting now, we have been having the Rick Green shop, and he is also available for questions as well as Wynn from Traffic. Both of them have made themselves available in case there are any questions relating to those two topics. But we essentially see this as a very easy and efficient way for businesses to submit plans. So by just submitting some really basic information to the building department, it can be sort of taken there as an intake point and then distributed to the various departments for review, whether it's a street, if it's not a street, if it's a pot, if it's a parking lot or something like that. The city can take a look at it and give it that, that sort of temporary use where they can then start deploying the shades and the seedings and things like that. And obviously, all of these, these temporary uses would coincide with the timeframes that are issued through the executive orders so that we make sure, again, that we're in compliance with state and, and local orders. On the messaging side, I mean, this is sort of really the frontline of, of enforcement, which will be the next slide here in a moment. By developing some type of messaging kit for businesses to use, we feel like that would really go a long way to both helping folks understand how to use the spaces, how businesses can manage, manage these spaces and what folks need to do. We do have a sign shop that can help us with this. So in spaces where we want to deploy signs in streets or sidewalks, we can use, utilize our sign shop to develop those signs so that they are in compliance with a, a lot of information that currently already exists. I mean, there is just a wealth of examples out there across the country of folks doing similar things like this, whether it's the CDC or other cities. But there's no shortage of content that we can definitely tap into. So ultimately, we get down to enforcement, which I know a lot of you, I, I kind of predicted was going to be the meat of, of the discussion because that really is the most important part. And really thinking about, you know, we have these great executive orders that really make it clear on what people should be doing. But right behind that needs to be the business participation. They need to be our partners in this, and they need to understand that without their help, it, it, it will not work. And, you know, we've already, we had a great call last Friday with a handful of businesses. A sample from the north end, a sample from downtown, and then a couple on South Dixie Highway. And one of the businesses from downtown Rocco, Rocco's Taco, has already, has already made plans to have a specific sort of COVID staffer that their sole job is to ensure social distancing when, when folks are coming to Rocco's Tacos. So businesses, from what we can tell, are taking this very seriously. But as Raphael had mentioned, I, I too predict that, you know, there will be some bad players that we will need to address. But those will be the exceptions, not the rule. But between the business participation and some of the best practices that they're gonna do matched with the, the strict site plans that we have laid out and the messaging and the signage that's put up, really PD should really only have to do very little aside from just providing that, that presence that I think will make everybody feel safe and to prevent those large groups or, or block parties from, hopefully, we won't have to deal with those as well. But this kind of sign is a, is a good example of, of some of the things that are being deployed around the country. This one's from California, but it's, these are the type of signs that we can make locally with our sign shop that can be easily deployed in these areas. So I would be remiss if we didn't think about sort of worst case scenario, but, you know, again, if we make it clear at the very beginning of the project what the behavior is expected and that folks need to follow, you know, city orders directed by the mayor on what they need to be doing, you know, there will be compliance. However, in the event that we do have violations, these were some of the options that we think could be applied to those businesses or areas where maybe we just, it's not, it's just not remaining safe, and we do need to perhaps take a step back and, and readdress situations moving forward. But with that, that pretty much concludes what we've come up with. Again, this was just a general outline. We can, obviously, if the mayor and city commission, you all would like to move forward with sort of filling in any of the gaps in some of these details and how, how we can roll it out. But with the DDA leading, uh, leading the way and, and, and the CRA and the rest of our partners, we think we've got a good plan to assist our business community. Again, through reopening and, and some strategies to help support them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. And as we are working through the enforcement issue, I'll ask Legal, what I'd like to do is, as, as you're putting together strategies is to have a tiered approach. You know, one, one infraction, you know, there, there's certain things that happen. But, but I want it to be a very short leash so that I don't want to go through three or four. You know, so I, I think you get one strike, and that's it. And then if, 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 if you're not doing it the second time, then we need to take some more extreme action. But Legal, we could, we could work on some things along those lines. Quick question for you guys. Chris, did you look at the warehouse district at all? Is there anything we could do over there for some of those businesses?
Mayor, I will say, I didn't take a, I didn't do an assessment of, of parcels and things like that. You know, luckily, the warehouse district does have that, that great pedestrian path behind their businesses. And they also have a lot of parking lot, sort of those old warehouse loading bays. Where, actually, I got some takeout there over the weekend, and, you know, they have, they've already put stickies down that tell people where to stand. And they've removed a lot of their seating to ensure that, you know, if people are enjoying their takeout right there on the loading dock, that they are separated. So you know, again, the, the good businesses are doing what they need to do to keep people safe and people feel comfortable utilizing those spaces. So but we'll, we'll definitely take an assessment of, of all areas of the city to see where we could apply these, these principles.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert, you had a question or two?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris, and Allison and Raphael. Appreciate the thoughtfulness and, and Commissioner Show for your leadership on this group. I think it's really great that we're thinking ahead and trying to make sure we're helping our small businesses and restaurants. I had a question about enforcement, just, and, and then one about restaurants and businesses in the south end. The one on enforcement has to do with those general space areas like Flamingo Park, the park of Flamingo Park, and just asking that staff be aware that as people start visiting there, more, we'll have more trash accumulating there. We've already seen that with some of the hot meals that are being served throughout the city, that our trash cans are overflowing and we might need to revisit the schedule of pickup for those or additional trash cans in those areas. My question about the, the restaurants in the south end is that you, Chris, you had a few slides talking about permitting outside of the downtown area. But I don't, I didn't really see that it went into a lot of detail. Maybe you already have this detail or you're still working it out. But are restaurants going to be allowed who, who are not on Clamatis or that main street to do minor modifications to their hardscape or their landscape on their own private property to be able to accommodate more outdoor seating?
Yes, I, I think that's the plan, is that knowing that, you know, inside their four walls, they can only operate at twenty-five percent initially. And then that'll, you know, will be lessened as, as time goes on and the pandemic subsides. That we anticipate there's going to be folks that maybe want to use a portion of their parking lot as perhaps some outdoor seating or, you know, as you mentioned, adjust some of their landscape. And what we want to do is, is create a path, an easy permitting path where they could submit something simple with like, it's just a general site plan. It says if there is any kind of you know, structure out there that, you know, requires a removal plan, what that looks like. But a, a lot of this will be captured when it is submitted to the building department as we start reviewing. And if there are any questions, we'll make sure we get those cleared up quickly. But the idea is that, you know, folks are able to utilize their private property in a way that allows them to expand seating, knowing that, you know, they have to operate at a, at a certain level. So does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. No, thank you. So we don't have a specific guideline that they have to follow. You're letting them submit what plans that they have based on, on this criteria here on this slide.
Right. I mean, the, the, what we expect them to submit is something that shows the six feet separation, very much like the, the distance between tables and chairs that the DDA has come up with. So we know that those, those areas need to be about six feet apart. So if they can show a site plan where they're adding additional seating and maybe areas that were initially, say, used for parking or used for some other use, that now, here's our new site plan, we would like to do this for a temporary period of time, and they are separated six feet apart, then, you know, the city can sit there and say, okay, that's good, you know, looks, looks like a, a good use. And we essentially give them a quick temporary permit that allows them to utilize what would normally be a parking spot or something else. Perhaps a sidewalk on a, on the side of a city street that comes off of South Dixie Highway or something like that so that they can go ahead and add those additional seats.
What we, what we also need to do as they're submitting those permits is they, they need to tell us, if, if they're using a portion of their parking lot, for instance, they need to tell us where they're gonna park cars or how they're gonna replace those parking spaces, particularly at the south end where parking is at a premium anyway. And while, if, if you're not at a hundred percent capacity, presumably there'd be a few, less of a demand on parking. But if you are removing a portion of the parking from a parking lot you have, where are you gonna park those cars? So that's a question, that's a box we gotta check, I would think, as we're looking at these permits.
Agreed. And I think that gets into what Raphael had, had mentioned earlier is, is really that's where the businesses come in. And if you are gonna have that additional seating, you're gonna require reservations. And having that reservation component and not just allowing the walk-in perhaps can help alleviate some of the parking um, perhaps can help alleviate some of the parking strains that may occur.
Okay.
And Mayor, may I just follow up one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Chris, would it be possible to offer that information about rental for the umbrellas and tables and chairs that are going to be, I understand the DDA or the CRA might be covering that for those areas, but in areas that were not in a CRA or DDA, they might be able to benefit from the economies of scale of rentals. Um, maybe that information could be shared with those business owners as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, you had a comment, question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I just want to say that I could not be more proud of the work that this group has done in such a short amount of time to get this program together. And I think what is particularly important i- is two facets of this program. One is the regulatory environment. The better the information and the instruction we get out to restaurants, the better off that we are, which is why I think it's, it's an ingenious concept of coming up with dining on the spot, because it signifies that there was a way that we dined before, and there is a way that we're dining now. And having that clear signage that comes out that says, don't move these tables, you know, we're happy where we are, please leave us comfortably and socially distanced, and stay positive in our messaging, is really, really important. And it helps to have the public identify and brand that this is a dining-on-the-spot location. And, um, that I understand that the association of social distancing with that. Um, and as that information is out, some of the things that Chris alluded to of, of having messaging, we have security ambassadors in a lot of the areas that we're talking about. Give them the opportunity to come up with a palm card and say, hey, here's some information, glad to see you back out. And, oh, by the way, you, you need to make sure that your table is back in configuration, you know, it gives a more positive intro into it. And, and perhaps there's the opportunity also to, um, create an arm of 822 that if, you know, we, we end up getting a lot of messages back from the public, whether we see it online, or, you know, individuals get text messages of, of residents policing, um, social distancing measures. So perhaps there's a way to direct it to 822 that goes to code enforcement, or I don't know the, the proper entity. Um, but I think the more that we can get out the branding around the, the dining-on-the-spot concept, the more the public can start to recognize that it means, um, the, the new era of social distancing, of safety and sanitary measures. And the idea of this is that it is a framework. We acknowledge that we haven't analyzed every business. There are, there are strip mall restaurants that weren't included in the, the specific analysis of what we did, but these same principles can be applied anywhere. And, and that is really what we have looked at, is that this is a brand-new era of what are essentially long-term special events. So instead of having a special event for three days, you're having a special event for, uh, you know, a longer period of time. And so being flexible in our regulations of, um, instead of requiring engineering that, that made sure that shade sales were anchored down for a hurricane, having that safety measure of what is the takedown plan, because they will not be here during a hurricane. And that's not something that we've dealt with previously. So I, I want everyone, while we've looked at some specific examples of where we can use this in the right of way, we started to look at some of those individual businesses too. Specifically important to me was looking at businesses in our northwest, where there is not a, a concentration of a retail center, um, but there are individual restaurants. And how do we look and apply these same concepts to individual restaurant locations? So there's a number of things that, that there's always going to be a, a situation that hasn't been analyzed to the fullest. But the idea was to try to come up with some overarching parameters that helps to generate those ideas and submit. We're always going to have unique situations, just like we have unique neighborhoods throughout our city. So I want to make sure that, that we, we look at it from the viewpoint, this is not just for the downtown, just for the, the north end, just for the south end, just for the northwest. These are our citywide recommendations that should be applicable to any business for, for them to be able to operate in the new regulatory environment. So, um, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity through the CRU team to work with this team, because I, I think this is a great example of some of the amazing work, um, that can be done in, in such an expedited manner.
Uh, and hats off to all those involved for, uh, the creativity demonstrated. But, but again, and then I hate to beat on this horn too much, but I want to make sure the business community understands that they are the ones, the ones that are going to have to be the primary enforcers of these guidelines. Because I don't have a police force that I could send to all four corners of the city to babysit, okay? And, and that's why I want the lease to be very short. And so if a business owner is not responsible about enforcing these guidelines, then the opportunity to have this, 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 uh, option is going to be eliminated very quickly, uh, because this is a matter of public health. So as long as, as we're talking to the business owners, they know that the primary responsibility for enforcement lies on their shoulders, not on our security ambassadors, not on our police. This is up to them to enforce it. And if we start getting complaints, they're the ones who are going to have to suffer. Um, so, but, but the creativity, the opportunity to, to help our business community, I love it. Um, Raphael, I'm going to get back to you because I got to defer to my Commissioner first. Uh, Commissioner Fox, you got a couple of questions, and I'll come back to Raphael.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all involved. This is fantastic. I think, um, you know, just our ability to be flexible and to come up with these very creative plans. Thank you. I'm very appreciative. Uh, I just had a couple of questions. For one, I understand that this concept can kind of ebb and flow into different areas. But I wondered specifically if anyone had been in touch with Rosemary Square. I know that they have, you know, obviously, they're kind of curbless street, um, and many restaurants that might benefit in the same way as those on Clematis Street. And then, um, I guess, secondly, I'm just curious about the businesses that might be opening today. Like, I know that Avocado Grup, one was opening. Um, there are probably others. I'm just wondering, and before we get this up and running, you know, what's, um, in terms of the enforcement and just the guidelines for opening, um, those restaurants. And, you know, Raphael, I really liked the, uh, when you mentioned reservations, for example, as, you know, one way to kind of curb the, to, to social gatherings. Um, and I'm just wondering if any of those kind of policies are in place right now. So, so sorry, those are kind of random questions, but Rosemary Square and, and the openings before we get this up and running.
A very good question. Who can address that? Okay, Raphael?
Uh, Commissioner Fox, I, I have had a, a couple of conversations with, uh, Rosemary Square. Uh, I've been trying to find a, a time to, to catch up with Gopal, um, the principal there. And, uh, I, I, I know that, you know, they are always, um, sort of leading the way on a lot of things with public space. But of course, um, we'll share whatever we have with them. Um, they're part of the district, they're part of the downtown. I mean, even though they're not properly within the DDA, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, this whole program, as I've said, I honestly feel like we should open source this plan and the messaging. Um, I, I, and I, well, I mean, I'll, I'll just say what I, what I wanted to say, and I'll, and then I'll be done with my comment. Um, ditto to everything Commissioner Sho said. In terms of making this, uh, as flexible as it can be, that was the vast majority of what I was going to, going to say. But I feel like the best thing we can do for our business community right now, aside from support them in this effort, is to give them all this information in whatever open source plan we can, post it on the website, make it downloadable, including, and maybe, maybe especially the messaging. And I think the messaging about behavior. And I think that it should be in the form of an invitation for people to collaborate with our success, to please be part of the solution. Just like, you know, when you go to Disney or when you go to any of these places where they are trying to manage public behavior at a very, very large scale, is that we make this an invitation. Um, and, and again, I'll defer to, to Mary. I'll mention Mary and her team. Um, Community Events in West Palm Beach is one of the best success stories around. They've produced so many events for so many years. She's a great advisor on how to set things up and how to permit things. Um, we at the DDA have gone through their permit process as long as I've been here. And there are parameters in place that if you're going to do X, you got to do Y. And I think that we could, can create a very simple toolkit for this, for, for whether it's, whether it's Table 26's parking lot or Northwood Road. I think we can create a very simple toolkit with all the information we have at, on hand right now, and open source that, and just let it, let it be, um, available to anyone that would get, would, would, uh, download it. Thank you.
Now Raphael, with those, did you combine the answer to that question with your comments? Would I need to come back to you for additional?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm finished.
Very efficient. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Madam President, your note says final comments. I'm going to hold you to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to kind of put some, some wrap-up on this conversation at, at your direction, Mayor. Um, we have several plans that, that are ready to take off. And like I said, when we started this, we, um, didn't have the direction from the governor that we do today. And so I think it, it behooves us to try to move as quickly as possible. Um, I also want to be mindful that a typical process would have had, you know, uh, visits with commissioners individually to get feedback. And, and Mayor, if it's okay with you, um, I'd like to have this move forward to the extent that it can, and of course, come back to, you know, CRA boards, et cetera, for the things that legally need to be approved. But with, with your permission, if there's a commissioner that has a one-off question for staff or wants to have an individual meeting, that they could schedule that staff time, um, individually, but to keep the momentum moving forward on this, um, with the blessing of, of this vetting today, I, I would ask that we can continue to move this, this plan forward.
No, no, I, I would, uh, uh, agree with you. Let us try to expedite this from the development of, uh, you know, permitting regulations, uh, et cetera. Let, let's use this as, let's view this as a unique opportunity. Uh, and just as we've hustled and gotten money out to the, uh, our, a small business community, this is another thing that we could do to benefit our business community. So let's, uh, expedite it. So staff, uh, whether it's legal, whether it's, uh, planning, uh, let, Chris, your group, economic development, let's expedite this, uh, because the sooner we get these in place and start seeing how they flow, the better. And it will help our businesses. So, uh, consider that a direction from, from me as Mayor. And, uh, and the only other thing is that, that the commissioners, I still, if you have questions, still go through Ms. Johnson, because I don't want us to get in the habit. I, I understand. Uh, and, and then we will make sure that we get staff to respond to you promptly. Let's maintain that protocol. But, uh, my, my view, my, my request, uh, to, to, to staff, to, to my administration is that let's expedite this and do everything we can, uh, to, to get it done quickly. And I think there have been some promises there to we'll get it done by this weekend. Hopefully, we can accommodate that, uh, and, and let, let's move in that direction.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions?
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, for the commissioners, uh, if you have any questions, send those directly to me. Uh, by email, you don't need to send those via the Commissioner Inquiry System. So I just want to make that clarification.
Okay. Well, this is exciting. Uh, and again, it shows how flexible West Palm Beach is. I know I'm bragging about our city all the time, but, um, I, I think in terms of the response to COVID-19, yes, I'm biased. I think that the, our city, uh, has been the leader. And I think this is another example of that leadership. Uh, so to all those involved, beginning with you, Madam President, thank you. Uh, all the others participating, thank you. And we can certainly, we'll certainly do a weekend from an administration standpoint to support you in that and rolling these out quickly. Oh, the other thing I did want to point out, just for information, uh, you'll see it in the, uh, press release. With respect to the nail salons and barber shops, et cetera, um, rather than doing a moratorium, uh, there was, there are certain components, certain guidelines in the mayor's and the governor's executive order, which were permissive. Uh, so, uh, rather than making those permissive, uh, for those businesses, we are making those mandatory. Relatively minor, making sure you clean up every day and that type of thing. They were suggested by the, in the governor's executive order, I'm going to make them mandatory for, uh, those businesses that do that type of business in West Palm Beach. But we won't be doing the, uh, moratorium. So we will get that word out today as long as they understand that those guidelines are now mandatory guidelines. At least if you're doing business in West Palm Beach, uh, they can start doing business right away. So, but that's just a clarification. Um, okay, anything else on this item? Hearing none. Uh, item three, city employees back to work site plans. Uh, the information there is I, I made a request of staff, uh, probably a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Ms. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
That I, I, I wanted, um, uh, department heads to begin putting in place, uh, the plans for what life would look like once we, uh, got back engaged with, with, uh, a, a full work staff. And I think that those plans are due, uh, in, in another week or so. Again, it was, uh, the anticipation was, while we didn't have a date certain for reopening City Hall completely, we did at least want to get ahead of the ball and start laying down specific plans, whether it's from a staffing standpoint, whether it's from a facility standpoint, as to what, uh, would, you know, those departments would look like, uh, post pandemic. And so as we start compiling those, we'll start digesting those, uh, and, uh, preparing accordingly. Uh, but we didn't just want to say, turn on the lights, we're open for business, without having given some, uh, comprehensive thought and analysis to what it should, what our workplace should look like once we did get re-engaged completely. Is that, anything you want to add to that, Ms. Johnson? Does that summarize it?
No, that, that accurately describes it. Uh, the plans are actually due this Friday. However, I will tell you that most of the departments have already submitted their plans. So they are on top of this, uh, assignment.
Fantastic.
Mayor, I would like for you to, uh, speak to what your thoughts are about the library. I think it was indicated, uh, in a press release that we were looking at opening that back up maybe next week. And so we need to just kind of discuss that.
I, I don't know if I, I, I haven't come up with a date. I want to talk to staff and, and see. Um, again, I just want to make sure we have a plan for that, but I don't have a date certain. I don't know where that came from. I didn't say next week. Uh, maybe somebody, anyway. But no, we'll talk about that.
All right. Because, yeah, I do think that was, that was publicized. So I'm glad we're having, we're getting that clarification.
No, we'll, we'll talk about that. But yes, we want to get it open, but I want to do it smartly and safely. So we'll have further conversations internally as to when that date would be.
Okay, thank you.
If, if there's something out there saying it was next week, we'll clarify that, uh, because it's not going to happen next week, I don't think. Anything else?
Uh, that's all for me.
All right. Now, I do have a very important matter of business. And, uh, Ms. Johnson, I'm going to turn this over to you, because we have a new Assistant City Administrator who I don't think has been introduced to formally, at least as part of this. So if you would mind introducing, uh, Ricardo to, to some of the commissioners and those who may be listening, uh, please go ahead. That's very important. Ricardo, weapon to the team, but Ms. Johnson, take over.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as, uh, the email to the commissioners and the staff indicated, uh, Mr. Ricardo Mendez Saldivia is the new Assistant City Administrator over the Infrastructure and Land Development Operations. Uh, he came on board, uh, last Monday. So this is his first full week, uh, here on the job. Uh, has a very strong background in, uh, the various, uh, operations that he will oversee. Uh, he is a professional civil engineer, uh, has a strong background in, uh, water, uh, utility, uh, wastewater treatment plants, uh, project, uh, management, uh, capital improvement projects. Uh, he is also, uh, a ICMA certified credential, uh, manager. So his, uh, technical skills are balanced, uh, with the administrative skills going through that ICMA credentialing, uh, process. So we're looking, uh, forward to having him be a member of our team and, uh, utilizing all of his talents and skills. Ricardo?
Ricardo, you want to say any words?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Ms. Johnson, uh, commissioners, um, and staff members, Madam President. Uh, first and foremost, uh, thank you for your kind, uh, consideration and, uh, the opportunity to serve. I'm really looking forward to work with each and every one of you and make a significant contribution and add a great deal of value to the city management operations. Um, my career is my life. It is really an honor to be here. And I'm enthusiastic, and I like to thank everyone so far for their kindness. so far for their kindness and their assistance while I get acclimated with the multiple areas of management and the departments that I'm going to be overseeing.
We're glad to have you.
Great to have you on the team. And commissioners, if you haven't seen his resume, get a copy of it because we are very fortunate to have him. He brings bucket loads of experience and expertise to our city, and we were really fortunate to have him. So welcome aboard. I'm glad you didn't decide to leave after the first week, so it's a good sign that you're still here. And Ms. Johnson didn't run you away. I was concerned about that. I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the body, commissioners? Again, thank you all so much. I miss you terribly, and let's keep up the good work. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.